Let's give it one more minute or a few more seconds. We've got a bunch of people coming in. All right, Mary, we're good.
Okay. Welcome to the open session then of the December 7th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have Pledge of Allegiance, which could we pre-stand to that? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic always stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next we have public service announcements. Chase, do you have any?
I have none, thank you.
Mike?
Neither do I. Mike?
Ian?
I have none.
Okay. Mary?
I just want to say, I know I talked about the home of the brave road race last meeting, and the numbers are in, and it raised $2,000. So $1,000 each will go to Project New Hope and bettering faith to local organizations out of Worcester. And that was the total. I want to thank the Public House, and I also want to thank Sturbridge Coffee House for their contributions. They donated portions of a cupcake, and Sturbridge Coffee House donated all the proceeds from the sandwich for that week, and also 20% of the total sales for that Saturday. We raised $1,000. It was a great community effort. And I also want to publicly thank Christine Asmussen, who is our Race Director, for doing a great job.
Okay, thank you, Mary. The only thing I have is Sunday, the fire department is sponsoring Santa Driving through town. If you go to the website, you can get the time and you can get the group. Okay, next, we please have a moment of silence for those affected by COVID, and also for those who lost their life at Pearl Harbor and all the families affected. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, 35, we have a public hearing, Brush It Off LLC, change of premise. After that, we have a presentation, recognition by the Sturbridge Historical Commission to Barbara Year, and a presentation by the housing planning, present, by the housing. It's the Housing Plan presented by CMRPC and the Housing Partnership. Department reports, Building Department, Department of Public Works, Town Administrators Report. We have several action items. Consideration and possible acceptance of the resignation of Christopher Kane from the Sturbridge Police Department. Consideration and possible acceptance of resignation of Kathleen Becker from the Sturbridge Fire Department. Consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the following donations to the town. Sturbridge Council on Aging from Mr. Dan Tash of the Quinabuck-Awcom Quasit Lake Association. Five $40 gift cards and four $25 gift cards to Stop &amp; Shop. Two $120 and $125 to Big Y. One $20 gift card to Shaw's. Twenty-five frozen turkey. Consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the donation of 36 Thanksgiving meals donated by the Town of Sturbridge Council on, oh, donated to, sorry. Council on Aging by Steve Small, proprietor of Old Bill Grill, and resident Craig Moran. Consideration and possible action on an amendment to the contract with Beolia to include repairs and improvements to groundwater inflow and infiltration. Consideration and possible action on a right of first refusal for 44 Allen Road. Notice of intent to sell pursuant to general law, Chapter 61A. Consideration, notice received by the town to sell for residential use and remove from classification approximately one quarter acre of property. Votes may be taken. Consideration and possible action on the Chaplain Program, Sturbridge Police Department. And we have old business, COVID-19 update, septic, American Legion request, sewer and water rate study, new business, caregiver, local groups, curbside service, right of first refusal, 27 Ladros, correspondence, approval of minutes, November 16th, 2020, citizens forum, amendment, we will adjourn. Okay, Mike, do you have the public notice?
Yes, I do. Notice is hereby given that an application has been filed by Brush It Off LLC for a on-premises wine and malt license at a location change for the premises located at 559 Main Street Suites, 206 through 207, Fishtail, Mass., 01518, to 559 Main Street Suites, 104, Fishtail, Mass., 01518, with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen. In accordance with Massachusetts Chapter, General Law's Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, December 7th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. This hearing will be held virtually. The Sturbridge Board of Selectmen elects, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, to hold a public hearing virtually. Details regarding how to virtually access a meeting can be found here at www.sturbridge.gov/town-administrator/pages and forward slash "O" dash "access" dash "virtual" dash "meeting."
Okay. And all the notifications went out, and they were noticed as receivables came back. So Denise, would you like to explain what you're doing? This is Denise Morgan from Brush It Off.
Yes. So a space in the building has become available. It's bigger than the space that I'm currently in now. And the 206, 207, for COVID reasons, makes it very tough to offer private parties, being one large room. And through COVID, what I've found, people don't want to come inside unless it's a private party where they feel a little more comfortable. Outdoor events that I had hosted, paint nights at, did very well. One proving that outside does not, I had one in a room which had no overhead covering, was not in a pavilion, and we had thunderstorms, and I ended up with a lot of refunds because we all had to go inside. So this new space that is available at 104 has a patio outside where I can see COVID compliant. I have about eight tables that could go out there, and we could do parties. Outside comes spring, obviously. But we have a lot of plans ahead, hoping we want to put, pairing up with the Stone and Sparrow Cafe on this patio where people can go out and enjoy their breakfast, lunch, or dinner, and paint at the same time, perhaps. Hosting outdoors in the spring will be beneficial to Brush It Off. The space that I'm in, that I'm moving down to, is broken up three different sections. So I could have no more than ten receivables. I have a party room, night room, and an oak paint room. So I hope that we separated. But it is a lot bigger. It was either put money into my current space, and only have two rooms, or, and no patio, or downstairs.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Okay, anyone in the audience?
Hold on, I'll check.
Have a comment or a question?
Good evening. Is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak to the Brush It Off liquor license amendment, public hearing? Is there anyone on the public line that would like to speak in the public hearing for Brush It Off liquor license? There's no one on the line. Mary?
Okay, is there a motion to close public hearing?
This is Mike. I move that we close the public hearing on the liquor license for Brush It Off.
Is there a second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you for coming in, Denise, and good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Mary?
Take care.
Is there a motion now to approve?
Okay, all right, gotcha.
Yep.
No, that's what I was gonna ask.
Hey, oh, yeah. No, we have to approve it. Oh, I disapprove. Is there a motion from someone?
This is Mike, and I'd make a motion to approve the amendment to the liquor license from, for Brush It Off, that they're seeking for, to move from their current location at 559 Main Street Suite, 206 to 207, to 559 Street Suite 104.
Is there a second?
Mary will second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Excuse me?
Oh.
I just read 104, and I think in the notice it said 204, if I'm not mistaken. Is it?
It should be 104.
Okay, 104 is correct. That's what my motion was. Sorry.
No problem. Chase, how do you vote?
I vote yes, Chase.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Okay, and I vote yes. So that's 401. Okay, thank you, board. Thank you again, Denise.
Denise, good luck with your move.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for being such a diligent entrepreneur. Keep going.
I like the painting behind the mic. Thank you very much, everybody.
Who are we? Why are we here? So, uh, some of the readers have no time, that's anyhow.
Okay, next. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation, recognition by the Sturbridge Historical Commission to Barbara Year. Barbara?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, we are giving a present, a plaque to Bob for a lifetime effort to share Sturbridge history. And I just wanted to give a couple of examples of why Bob is receiving this presentation. As a student of history, when I moved to Sturbridge 20 years ago, I was told that Bob was the go-to person if I wanted to find out anything about Sturbridge history, and that he would give people tours in his van to point out places of interest and tell stories. So we did take him up on that tour, and during the tour, he said, "Well, would you like to know where the Quinabuck River starts?" And I said, "Sure." So he took me up to the northern end of Ledmine Pond and showed me a trickle of water coming out of a spring, and said, "This is the beginning of the Quinabuck River. It goes into Ledmine Pond and travels on." And, "Would you like to straddle the Quinabuck River?" So I think that was, that was a memorable moment. So he has, Bob has an expansive interest in history, from math, which I think is one of his favorites, to genealogy, which he helps people with when they write in to the town asking for information on their ancestors, to gravestones. And he is the person that goes to the CPC every year and asks for money to restore gravestones in the Old Burial Ground and North Cemetery. The other thing I found out about Bob is he likes to drive. So, and he likes to track down history, particularly. And I remember a presentation that he gave about tracking down the Franklin Markers and the Boston Coast Road markers, which is, it can be, can be difficult and interesting to do when you find where these markers are or where they've been taken to. And a few years ago, not that many, Bob made a road trip from Massachusetts to Oregon on Route 20, which was one of the first highways that was built as a result of the Federal Highway Act of 1921. And he took some water from the Atlantic Ocean to the Pacific Ocean and dumped that water in the Pacific Ocean to commemorate his trip. And I certainly enjoyed the presentation he gave about that trip. One of the monumental projects that Bob undertook was to rebuild the Veterans Memorial in front of the Town Hall. The old one had been destroyed during the process of renovating the Town Hall. And Bob took it upon himself to gather up people, workmen, skilled workmen that he knows, and, and get that monument or that memorial rebuilt bigger and better than it was previously. And he also raised all the funds to build that memorial. So it was no, no expense to the town. And it is, if anyone, I'm sure you have noticed the memorial in front of Town Hall, it's pretty impressive. So there have been many other projects that I've heard about. He took a tour group to England several years ago to meet people in Sturbridge Sister City, Power Bridge, I think you pronounce it. He arranges for schoolchildren to put flags on Revolutionary War soldiers at the Old Burial Ground every year for Memorial Day. He's given tours to the commons, including tours for Walktober. And like I said, he gives these free lectures to people and groups that are interested in Sturbridge history or in some of the projects that he has done. Charlie is here. Charlie's known Bob a lot longer than I have, and I think he has something to say also. Charlie? Yes, okay.
You're muted, Charlie.
Charlie's muted.
Charlie, you have to unmute yourself. Okay.
He's muted. He's going to...
Oh, wait a minute. I think I just got it. Hold it. Can you hear me now?
He just got it.
Okay, great, great. Yeah, so I just certainly...
He's gonna use mine.
No, I've got it now. I'm all set. If he can hear me, we're in great shape here. Okay, so I just wanted to certainly agree with everything that Barbara said. But I thought I'd focus my comments on the effort that Bob put in over the years to really build up the Sturbridge Historical Society. You know, it started over 20 years ago, and it was really through his efforts that it continued to function and grow. I know there were many meetings where there were only a handful of people there. Bob had to struggle to find speakers and often had to come up and do his own programs. So over the years, he continued to put the effort into it, and it's really turned into the success that it's been up until unfortunately what happened with the COVID. But I think that among his other accomplishments has been really one of the most significant because the Sturbridge Historical Society has really been a great organization.
Okay, thank you. So it's an honor for the Sturbridge Historical Commission to present Bob with a plaque in appreciation of all of your efforts and your activism and sharing of Sturbridge history with people that you have, that you've done over the years. So I can show you the plaque if I can get it up in the, up in the screen. It's really, I think, pretty nice. It's framed. It's made of coriander, which is what all the other plaques that we did is made of. And I didn't take the cover off. So it reads, it's got this town seal, and it says, "Historical Service Award Presented to Bob J. Barriere in recognition and appreciation for his lifelong interest in and dedication to the history of Sturbridge, including his role in the founding of the Sturbridge Historical Society and his years of service as president of the society, presented by the Sturbridge Historical Commission 2020." So we have made arrangements to present this in person tomorrow at 11:00 AM in, in front of the memorial, in front of the Town Hall. And everyone is invited to come. Bring your mask, and we will social distance and looking for that. Bob, do you have anything you want to say? You have to unmute. You have to hit that red spot there on, on the screen. Just click on that red, red, I don't know what it is.
Down on the, Bob, on the, down, Bob, on the bottom of your screen, there's four circles on the left. It says, "Mike." Click that one.
The one on the left.
There you go.
Okay.
I am humbled and honored by this. I've been living in Sturbridge now for over 80 years, so I've learned a lot of things that a lot of people would never know. And I'm always surprised when some of the elders in the town have said, "Wow, I've never seen that before." And so it tells me that there's a lot of things that even the elders haven't seen. But it's always nice to bring somebody around town and show them the places of interest. Let them straddle the Quinabuck River. Not everybody is willing to do that. They'll look at it and say, "Uh, no, it's all right. I'll let that go." I've had arguments about where the Quinabuck starts, but we can show it on maps that it does start at the end of Ledmine Pond. I want to thank the Historical Commission and all of you for taking the time to let me speak a little bit. Bob, what a nice thing it's been to do this. I've enjoyed it. I've spent many, many, many hours. But it's always been to my benefit that I've learned a lot about the town I lived in all my, all my life, really. So thank you very, very much.
So we are, we're very happy to, to present this, and we are very appreciative of everything you have done over the many, many years. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Barbara, Charlie. Anyone have a comment? Mary?
Just briefly, Bob, I can't think of a person more deserving of being recognized than you. If you look up the definition of what it means to be a pillar of one's community, then you are the quintessential example. We should be honored to have you as our, one of our residents. I'm gonna say that he does so much for our town, for the veterans, for the Historical Commission. And I'm also gonna tell a very brief, personal story. I mean, years ago, Bob was the bus driver for the students, for the children. And he has just a huge heart. He remembered the children that he had on his bus. My husband, entire family was one of them. And one of my husband's siblings passed away at a younger age, and he remembered her from being the bus driver, and he traveled an hour and a half to pay his respects. And that's the kind of man that we have in Bob, a person of compassion who is truly dedicated to our community. And his pride in Sturbridge and all its residents, from the children, to the adults, to the veterans, shines through. And I'm so happy that the, that Barbara and the Historical Commission has seen fit to honor him in this way. So thank you, Bob, and God bless you and your family.
Thank you. If I can just take a moment, I see two faces on the screen here. Earl Dessert, our temporary police chief, and I hope the board will soon appoint him as the full-time chief. I've known Earl since he was a, probably in high school. And then I thought back then, he's gonna be, make some family, be a nice dad. He's gonna give to whatever occupation he decides to follow. And a highway superintendent, I have never seen the roads this clean after a snowstorm as they were yesterday, today. The roads have been bare all during the storm because he has changed things in the highway department. And Bush is also a Bus One kid. I'm proud of him. Probably did the stuff in state in Sturbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
All the kids, it seems, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Barbara?
No, I just was waving goodbye.
Oh. On virtual, it always seems like somebody wants to stop when they raise their hand. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
We probably won't see some of you, so have a very nice Christmas and a new year. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation, the Housing Plan by CMRPC and the Housing Partnership. Okay, now, who's going to do this, Jean or Emily?
Mary, Emily has a small presentation to make. I can just kind of give the intro. So as the, as the board is aware, we've been working with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission since July of 2019, pre-COVID luckily, to work on the housing plan. So that enabled us to get our housing forums in, which were actually very productive and successful pre-COVID, which was nice. We also worked on a housing community need survey, which was, many residents took that survey. And so all of these planning processes informed this plan. And we are here before you this evening to ask that you adopt this plan so that we can bring it to the Department of Housing and Community Development for comment and hopefully ultimately being approved by them. The planning board has... The Planning Board has approved the plan already, so, um, we're hopeful that you will as well tonight, and with that, Emily will make our presentation.
Thanks so much, Jean. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, awesome. So we've been working on this plan, um, you can actually scroll to the next slide. There we go. Um, since about the summer of 2019, um, so it's been a combined effort between CMRPC, um, it's been myself and my colleague Ron Baron, um, who's also here tonight, um, he might pipe in if I miss anything in my presentation. Um, as well, uh, as well as the Sturbridge Housing Partnership, they've been fantastic group to work with, um, and the Sturbridge Planning Department. So Jean and Janay, thank you so much for your help throughout this process. Um, this has also all been possible to do, um, due to the Community Preservation Act, which is where, um, we got the funding for this. Um, can go on to the next slide. Thank you. Um, this is just a quick timeline, um, of, uh, the project. So we kicked off in the summer of 2019 with a really robust data collection process. Um, in the fall, we had a, um, community survey that on residential housing needs, um, we got two hundred and seventy-eight responses to that. Um, in the winter, we had a community forum, um, we had two sessions, an afternoon session and an evening session, um, with a total of fifty participants. Um, we had a lot of great engagement and, um, questions asked during those sessions, and I think it really, um, brought a lot of, like, interest to this subject in the town. Um, and then we began drafting the, the needs assessment and pulling together goals and, and an action plan. Um, we also interviewed, um, uh, community, uh, people involved in community housing and, and town staff, um, to get some more input on that. Um, COVID kind of delayed this process a little bit, but not too much, just by a few months. Um, and so, yeah, this is kind of the final step, um, until we are able to submit this plan to DHCD, um, and, uh, get an approved housing production plan. Um, so I can go to the next slide. Um, just briefly, how this plan can help Sturbridge, um, it can address unmet housing needs and demands, um, establish community vision for the future of housing, um, with clearly set goals and objectives, um, that were created, um, from data collection and input from the community. Um, it influences the type, location, and amount of housing being developed, um, to kind of diversify, um, the, the options for housing in the community. Um, helps people get engaged with, um, planning, um, and what they want to see their town be. Um, and it also helps, uh, this is the, the forty B component of this plan, it, it helps with the town, um, reach the state's ten percent affordable housing goal, which I'll get into in a little bit. The next slide. Um, so we had a really robust data collection process, so I just wanna just go over a few highlights, um, that we found, um, regarding housing in Sturbridge. Uh, we found the, the population in town is aging, um. Uh, the majority of housing stock, uh, is owner occupied, single-family homes, um, probably isn't anything too, uh, new to people, um, but it's, it's a really important thing to note, um, when we're thinking about, uh, who the, the, the town is providing housing for and, and what is available for people. Um, uh, the availability of rentals is decreasing, um, the vacancy rate is essentially zero, um, is down from about six percent in two thousand and ten, um, so it's really hard for people to come into this town, um, uh, especially if they're lower to moderate income. Um, there aren't a lot of rental options, and Sturbridge has one of the highest, um, median, uh, housing cost, housing sale cost, um, in the region. Um, yep, and not, not a lot has been, this is a pretty, uh, across-the-board trend in the region, but housing construction has yet to return to what it was before two thousand and eight. Um, uh, okay, next slide. Great, so this is the fun part about forty B. I'll try not to get too deep into this because it can be pretty confusing, but I just want to touch on it. Um, so Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty B states that every Massachusetts town has to have at least ten of its, ten percent of its housing stock qualify as affordable for those earning eighty percent or less of the area's median income. So, Sturbridge is in the, uh, Worcester County AMI, uh, area median income. So as of two thousand and twenty, that AMI is ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, so a family of four, um, with a combined income of seventy-nine thousand, uh, per year would qualify for affordable housing. Um, so I think that's something very important to note is how we, uh, kind of look at affordable housing and who's living there, and these are really middle-class, working-class families and individuals, um, trying to live in, in these communities. Um, so Chapter Forty B provides opportunities for developers to bypass local zoning in towns that are under the ten percent threshold, um, if they include, uh, affordable units in their proposed development. Um, so Sturbridge is currently at, I believe, five point six percent. Um, so you are under the ten percent, um, mandate from the state. So if a developer wanted to come in and they included, uh, like, a quarter of their, um, units in a proposed development, um, as affordable, um, as affordable to those earning eighty percent or less of the area median income, they could bypass local zoning to have something developed. Um, however, with the, um, when this, this plan gets passed by DHCD, um, and you, uh, the town produces a, uh, a half percent of affordable units per year, um, you can achieve Safe Harbor, um, in which you can, um, decline the, the, um, uh, for, uh, the comprehensive permits that developers would try to get. Um, go to the next slide. So this is kind of just a breakdown of, uh, the numbers, um, so, but it's also important to note that these, these are based on the two thousand and ten census, and all of this is going to change, um, come March or April when the two thousand and twenty census results are released. So this is going to change, but as of right now, um, in two thousand and ten, you had, the town has three thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine housing units total. Um, currently, only two hundred and nine, uh, units, uh, qualify as affordable, whereas you should be at three hundred and seventy-six to meet that ten percent target. Um, see, um, so if this plan is passed and approved by DHCD, and the town produces nineteen affordable units, which is, uh, half of one percent per year, you can achieve Safe Harbor. Um, alternatively, if you produce thirty-eight units, which is one percent over the course of two years, um, that also qualifies the town as, uh, achieving Safe Harbor. Uh, hopefully this isn't too confusing. We're almost done. Uh, next slide. So, just in summary, we're seeking, um, a board adoption of the plan. Um, we've already achieved, um, adoption from the Planning Board, as Jean said, um, so, um, yeah, I think that's about it. Just let me know if you have any questions.
Any, any questions from the board?
Well, well done. Thank you, Emily.
Hi, this is Ed Neal, the Chairman of the Housing Partnership, and I just want to thank Emily and Ron for the work that they've done. Uh, they put out a superior product in the report that's come before you. I would also want to cha- uh, uh, thank Jean Bouvan and Diane and Janay, uh, the Planning Department, who have been instrumental in putting this forward. Uh, it, it's a superior, uh, piece of work that they presented in this report, and, uh, it's enthusiastically, uh, that I think that the Housing Partnership, uh, will put this forward if accepted by the Board of directors.
Thanks so much, Ed.
Any other comments or questions? Do someone on the board want to make a motion then?
I, I just had a question. Is this a, a plan that is achievable, I mean, nineteen units a year to, to reach Safe Harbor? Is that?
It can be, um... It can be, um, it's important to note that, um, the town's not gonna be punished if they don't achieve this. Um...
Yeah.
The, the, the affordable housing goals, like, that's, that's one part of the plan, but if you go through it, it, a lot of the, the goals that we recommend, not just the number of, uh, housing units, um, but there's also... Sorry, I'm hearing feedback. Um... Yeah, there's also bylaws and, and other things in there that are more achievable, too, that will help you get to the ninety, uh, the, the nineteen units.
Uh, can I, this is, this is Ron Baron with, uh, CMRPC. I just wanted to add also, um, one of the things about that unit, it does seem like nineteen units is a lot, but it's important to remember that there are ways that communities can achieve that without having, uh, you have to, having to, to look for too many units coming up at once, uh, you know, for instance, if, say, a single, um, apartment complex goes in and, uh, minimum thrash, that, if that meets the minimum threshold of units, uh, that are deemed as affordable, and I think it's about twenty-five percent of the units in there are deemed as affordable, um, then every unit in that building is now put onto the, uh, the, the subsidized housing inventory, and that counts towards your total. So, say you had twenty units and two buildings put in, and each of those had the requisite number, then you have, even though, uh, a good chunk of those units are market rate because they meet that threshold that, you know, twenty-five percent of the apartments are affordable, now you get to count all of those units as part of the threshold. So there are ways that the town can meet it, that it isn't necessarily meeting out e- e- exactly nineteen, uh, single-family houses or nineteen condos that all have to be deed restricted within a single year. Um, and again, with the two-year period, you can have, like, a chunk of them happen one year and then a chunk of them happen another year, so they are more realistic than I think it may seem i- at first blush. Obviously, with the, the, the market being what it is right now, um, that, that, that may be more challenging, but, uh, who knows? I mean, we're, we're still very, very, uh, tight for housing production in Massachusetts. Um, the, the gap between what they're anticipating we need and what's actually being produced all over the state is, is huge, so I don't know that, you know, other than the, the labor shortage, uh, causing, uh, production costs to rise, I don't know how much it's gonna actually impact the, the, the developer side of things.
Hey, anyone else, Mary?
Um, yeah, I thought this was very well done, so I want to thank everybody involved in, in, um, drafting this. So there's no real downside or penalty that would result if we don't, um, meet our target goals that are set forth in the plan, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then I was just curious, I know you said Sturbridge is an aging, um, population, correct?
Yep.
Um, so into the household types, it says that the, um, the amount of households with children has increased, um, in the last, from two thousand to two thousand and eighteen. So we're still having an influx of younger people as well. That's going up, but at a decreasing rate? Is that true, or...
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me. Ron, can you comment on that?
Um, uh, I don't have it in front of me either, but my recollection of it is that yes, there is a, uh, an increase in, um, the, the number of families, but, um, not enough to offset the, the aging population. It's not enough to, 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 to change that trajectory very much.
Okay, that's...
But I don't know what the exact figures are in front of me. That's just my recollection of it.
Ed Neal, I do know that the fastest-growing, uh, segment of population in Sturbridge are the, um, um, seniors. And, uh, I think that the amount of children has remained somewhat flat since we've, uh, um, gotten the new school.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
I think that the, uh, that, um, the number of children we have, uh, while they, uh, I think have increased, um, I think it's basically been sort of a flat figure, uh, since the school has been built.
Okay. Um, I was just looking at the document. I guess in two thousand, we had one thousand, one hundred and two families with children, and in two thousand and eighteen, it increased to one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven. So in eight years, it went up two hundred children, so I guess that's not that significant, although it was an increase.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Emily, Matt Moselli, um, I'd like to know, given that there are no, no penalty or consequences for not achieving the ten percent mark, where does the incentive come from to achieve the goal?
That's Emily. I think that was me.
Did you hear what I said?
This is Ed Neal. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm doing it. Ed, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, uh, having done the plan, which is good for five years, uh, we basically have created a Safe Harbor, uh, which, uh, makes it so that developers can't come in with a hostile forty, uh, forty B.
So, and, and if I can, to your point, um, the, when we say there's no, uh, penalty, there's no penalty in the sense that the state is going to, you know, hold the plan or charge the town or, what's called funds or anything like that. Uh, but there is the, the fact that, that there does need to be movement towards the, uh, production of housing units, um, the state ha- it, when it, in order to get that Safe Harbor designation. So the incentive is that you, you need to have the, the plan in place, and then you need to be making, uh, reasonable, good faith efforts towards getting, meeting those goals in order for the state to look at a potential, uh, forty D development that you may not like and deny it on your behalf. So again, the way the process works with this is a developer will come in, they'll try to build something, they'll go to the, to the, to the zoning board, and they'll try to get a special permit, they'll get denied, and then they will, they can take it then to the state and say, "Well, look, they're below their ten percent, they don't have a housing production plan in place, they're not putting any effort towards putting in new, uh, housing, uh, affordable housing." Um, and we'll stick in the, the requisite number of affordable units, and then they'll be able to get the permit regardless of what the zoning says. So with these things in place, you're making concrete steps to kind of build that wall to, to, so that you'll have more local control over these types of developments if and when they come down the pike, and, you know, given the, the, the amount of, uh, of financial hardship that, that Massachusetts can be facing because COVID, even the lack of housing, and I think that's a realistic possibility.
So a developer needs to come in, show that the town is not making a good faith effort, and if that's shown, then he or she can come in and, uh, apply a hostile forty B application.
Essentially, yeah. So they have to come in and get denied at the, at the local level first, um, so the town always has an opportunity to work with the developer to try to forestall that process. Um, but if the developer, uh, doesn't want to change, they don't want to, they, they want to just build what they want to build, and they can afford to include the, um, the affordable component to it, which happens more often than, than we would think, um, then they can go up to the state level, file an appeal, and then DHCD will look at it, and these will, those are the things that they'll measure, they'll look to see, is there a housing production plan in place? Are they making, uh, uh, efforts towards developing, uh, the, enough affordable housing, et cetera? So that, that's when that, that phase kicks in.
It would behoove us to keep the process moving.
Yes, exactly. That, I mean, that's the benefit of having this, is because it, it's, it's showing that you're making a serious commitment to doing it, and every time you have something like that on the table, it increases the likelihood that the state's gonna come back and, uh, want to, to work with, with you to, uh, to try to, at the very least, make the, the, the proposal more in line with what you want to see in the town, if not deny it, uh, give the, give you the options to deny it outright.
Thanks.
Hey, anyone else?
A, a small part of the proposal has to do with a housing trust, and that we should or could move ahead with creating such a trust, and that would be a considerable advantage in retaining affordable housing. The way things are now is, uh, if, if a family buys an affordable dwelling... The way things are now is, uh, if, if a family buys an affordable dwelling, then decides to move or put it on the market, we only have ninety days before that house, that house is permanently taken out of the affordable housing category. So we don't want to work hard, I mean, it's really hard to get a, a dwelling onto, uh, as a, on the affordable list. Um, a housing trust can keep houses affordable in perpetuity. And that's firstly, one of my objectives as a member of the, uh, of the committee, is to see that we get, not only get these houses, but we keep them, uh, you know, again, in perpetuity. So I'd like to acknowledge that we need to work on, in my opinion, need to work on a housing trust, and would like to move ahead with that as soon as possible, excuse me, as soon as possible.
Uh, Ed Neil, just for the board's, um, um, edification, we accepted the provisions of Mass General Law, uh, and have created, uh, or accepted the statute to create a housing trust at the last annual town meeting.
Okay, so we can move ahead. Yeah. Sorry, Ed.
Hey, anyone else? Mary?
Mary, you're muted.
You're muted again, Mary.
No, Ed. Mary.
I'm just going to leave it unmuted. Um, I just have a follow-up question for what, um, for this last discussion. Um, so nineteen is, a year is our goal. So we don't have enough land, correct, to, to build a house or a two-family house, nineteen of them every year? So I don't know, I'm, that's one part of my question. And then the other part is, if someone can briefly describe to me, how do you go about converting an existing house to make it into an affordable house? Because if we don't have the, let's just assume we don't have enough land to keep building new apartments or duplexes or single-family dwellings, like when we did it with Habitat for Humanity, how do we take, and I understand that once it is an affordable house, a trust will help us ensure that it remains an affordable house into perpetuity. But what is the process of taking a house that's not currently an affordable house, and it's up for sale, and we want to make it an affordable house? Is, is there, can someone explain that to me in terms of how we, how that would take place?
Emily?
I'm not particularly familiar with that, that's not in my area of expertise, unfortunately, but I can, um, connect you with people in Mass Housing Partnership and, and with the state, the HCD, that would have a much better answer than mine. I don't know if Ron or Jean maybe know, but fortunately.
I, I could, I could say. Ron, I don't know if you want to jump in, but, um, Mary, generally, um, if you have a housing trust that has funds to create affordable housing, what they can do sometimes is purchase, um, a single-family or a two-family, and then deed restrict that property in perpetuity. And, but the problem is, is, um, you know, I'm not entirely sure the town wants to become a landlord. So I think the best course of action really for the hu- a housing trust, if we do form one, is to work with developers and to, uh, provide incentives for them to develop particular types of housing that we may want, and some of that may come in form of grants or community preservation funds. But I agree with you, I think it would be very difficult to create nineteen affordable units out of single-family new construction on an annual basis. But I think we have to look at projects like the one fifty main, one fifty-two Main Street, the Five Leaps project. That was ninety-nine units, and they would have met the threshold. So had that been built, we would have been able to count all of those units. So that would have put us very close to our goal of ten percent, so far surpassing the nineteen units per year. So that's not necessarily the answer, but it's one example of how different projects can add to that nineteen units. But I, I have the same concern as you with trying to reach the nineteen units a year, and I felt pretty comfortable after going through this process that because there is no penalty, I think the plan gives us a lot of really realistic goals to work, to, work towards so that we can create more affordable housing that's consistent with the community's character and what the residents might embrace.
Okay, no, I, I agree, but I'd like somebody else, because I was sitting here thinking, how the heck are we going to come up with nineteen every year? If those ninety-nine for year one could satisfy five years, that would be helpful, if you know what I mean. So that if we're trying to do nineteen a year, maybe some language that says, you know, in year one, if we a- approve a development that has a hundred units, and that would satisfy the next five years of nineteen each year, so that the following year we're not trying to convert nineteen again, we also, we satisfied it with the hundred a year before.
Exactly.
Can I, I just wanted to add one thing, if that's okay? Um, with the, um, the, one of the benefits of having the housing trust fund, um, is, you know, like Jean said, it's, uh, it's a good tool for, for purchasing properties and, uh, placing them under deed restriction. Obviously, the town doesn't want to necessarily become a landlord, but the thing is, is that it's, the town, if the housing, if a housing trust did want to purchase property, put a deed restriction on it and then sell it, you could have a deed restricted housing for a number of years. The, the key with that, though, is you can put a short-term deed restriction on it so that you can, you know, have a rolling stock potentially of houses that come off, depending on how much money you have, um, you know, that would be sold, they would be on the, the books for a few years, and then, you know, eventually they would come off, but hopefully you'd be able to keep that rolling and add a few units here and there, uh, in addition to some of the larger developments that we're talking about. So there's other strategies that, um, that can be employed, but I think the key is definitely, uh, seconding what Jean said, having the housing trust in place, funded and, uh, fully, uh, staff isn't the right word, but having the full board, uh, in place, um, in order to make sure that you've got that flexibility going forward. Because there's definitely things that can be done, but again, if you need to have the trust, and it's not the kind of thing that you want the planning board or the select board to, to want to be dealing with on a regular basis.
What, it is, Ed Neil, and what's impressive about the, uh, the study that has been done by CMRCP, uh, is, is addresses all of these issues, uh, within the context of the, uh, of the, uh, document.
Okay, is there anyone willing then to make a motion to adopt the housing production plan?
I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted somebody to answer the question, um, in year one, if we have a hundred units, will that satisfy a five-year, um, commit, will that satisfy the plan? Like, we're, I guess maybe show me the language that says we have to do nineteen a year. Because. Right, I, I guess I was just.
It would satisfy five years.
The goal is to get, is to get ten percent. That's the, man, once you achieve the ten percent, then we are, you know, we've accomplished our mission.
Okay, so then we don't have to continue with the nineteen per year. Is there?
That, that's, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is that if it's on a, 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 an adjusted basis, so if you had ninety-nine in one year and then you didn't see a single forty B, um, come in, in, within like four or five years, um, the conversations I've had with the, the HCD, I don't know where the language is in the law, but my understanding from them is that that's the case. If they look at it and they say, you know, well, you've averaged the production of nineteen units a year, when you get to that forty B, even though it's five years in, they, they would take that into account. Um, so there's not like a certificate that says, you know, you get safe harbor for this number of time and it expires at a certain point. It's just that it's, uh, you have to have, the only thing you really have to have in paper in place is the housing production plan. And then they'll say, okay, that's the starting point, now let's look at what their affordable housing production has been up until the point where we're, we've got this forty B application. And then we take those things into account. Um, so they have to look at it, as long as we can say you've had nineteen units over a year for, uh, you know, the last three or four years, provided that it's, you know, even if it happened in year one, they would still take that into consideration, is my understanding.
Okay, that's excellent. Is there anywhere in, I know this is such a long document, this plan, do we, is there any, what page do we talk about meeting the nineteen per year target?
Thirty-nine.
Okay.
Thirty-nine, Mary, is the housing production goal. And the housing production goals are based on the number of housing units we have in the community at this time. So you see that the plan is for five years, and it lists the nineteen units, and it, it shows what our gap of units would be to achieve ten percent. So if we were lucky enough to create nineteen units a year for the next five years, we still have a seventy-two unit gap to reach that ten percent. And I think the other thing too, Mary, is when a forty B comes in, and if the town denies it, you need to show that it's, um, it's not going to meet a regional need. So for example, if the ninety-nine units had just been built and somebody else came in, I think just approving a, a forty B, you have a safe harbor of two years. And then even after that, if we can show that there's not necessarily the regional need to be met, that we still have vacancies in this apartment building or things like that, those can all be taken into consideration when you're looking at a forty B as well.
All set. Hey, so is there someone then willing to make a motion to adopt the housing production plan?
This is Mike, and I'd like to make a motion, uh, that the Board of Selectmen adopt the, uh, housing production plan for, um, I guess it's called the, the, uh, two thousand and twenty production plan?
There is a second?
Second, Chase.
Hey, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
I can't.
How do you vote?
Is it only my connection that's bad, because I'm going to, is it, is anybody? Um.
Keep going in and out now.
I, okay, coming in and out of, um, reception for me. I'm, I'm going to vote yes. Um, I do, I do have some reluctance that I feel a little better about this only being goals, but I feel like nineteen a year, I just don't want to set us up for failure that we're adopting a plan that we can't satisfy. So I'm just, I guess I'm going to defer to, to Jean and the, um, CMRPC's advice on. But when I looked at it, I, it, it, I felt like, how are we possibly going to do nineteen a year? And I didn't know how the state would look at us for developing a plan that we don't come close to satisfying. So, um, like I said, I guess I'm going to defer on the expertise of everybody else on this one, and I will vote yes.
Hey, Ian, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Hey, Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Hey, thank you, Emily and Ron, and the, um, Housing Partnership Committee and Jean. Okay, good job, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a nice, have another Christmas and a happy new year.
Oh, you too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
But I don't think, I don't think we'll see you at our next meeting. Hey, take care.
Take care, bye.
Bye. Hey, next on our agenda, we have apartment reports. First one is Building Department. Nelson, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, one of my reports for September, October. Um, I got my routine there, my daily operations, as, as always, official permits, working with zoning questions, questions, committee applications. Uh, number two, zoning, in those two months, the biggest thing we dealt with was that five oh international. And, uh, you know, I sent the report to Jeff, and Jeff had sent it out to the selectmen and everybody, I assume, read it, understood it. Um, residential permits, uh, for the two months, with two, two hundred and forty-five permits at a value of thirty-one thousand two seventy-one. Uh, commercial permits for the month, uh, we have that monthly report book that lists them. Um, as far as permits, electrical permits, it was a total of sixty-three. Gas, fifty-one, plumbing, twenty-one. And then I break it down where, uh, specific upcoming and ongoing commercial projects. Um, as far as the ongoing ones, I listed what I thought, you know, were the important ones and where we're at on them. Uh, pilot travel, uh, if anybody's been by there lately, you'd see that, uh, the new building, the, um, is, is the travel center itself is, is, is up. Um, that's that thirteen thousand nine hundred and two square foot building. As far as, uh, the gas pumps, they have the, I believe it's, uh, six pumps, the smaller pumps for the cars, they, they have that in place, that's where you see the, that, that big sign that says pilot for the, for the top of the, uh, island. Um, that's actually the small, uh, pumps, it's not the, the nine one for the larger trucks. Um, I was there maybe a week or so ago, and they were telling me they're hoping that the, uh, that the, um, center itself, they're hoping to open it maybe like in February, and, uh, with, with the smaller cars going using it, that their goal is to take the larger pumps and, or the larger islands, the old building, and at that point get them with, start using the, the, the newer pumps, because they have the small ones in the front and the large ones in the back. And then, uh, three sixty-five Main Street, uh, Caregiver Patient Connection. Um, they, they renamed it to Roots. They're hoping to, uh, they're hoping to, they're going to open in two thousand twenty-one, they're hoping in the beginning of the year. Uh, John and I, the fire department and I, we were over there maybe a week ago, and we actually gave them a temporary occupancy. I, you know, uh, I had talked to planning and Jean was on board with it, and the reason we did it is that, uh, Cannabis Control Committee, they, they need the, the CFCs before they'll start the paperwork, and their paperwork takes a while. So we did give them their, their temporary, basically they have everything done except for like maybe the floors. They have a little bit of, uh, moldings and stuff to go on there, but, but most of their safety features, the paving's done, a lot of their grass is laid out, uh, you know, with all their shrubs and stuff. So they've got probably eighty-five percent of the site done, so we felt comfortable giving them the, uh, temporary to be business friendly and help out the process. Um, New England Cold Storage, uh, there's actually, um, we had the original cold storage, but if you were to, to look at, um, with the plaza and everything to the left of it, they're talking about putting up another cold storage building. It, it looks like it's, it's, it's going to, you know, happen. Um, the mobile retirement community, that's, that's still, the ongoing process, uh, they're proposing the sixty-five lots. Um, next to Edwards Gap to the right of that. Uh, Stonewall Grove, uh, they're expanding, they're going into that wall level. They're actually cutting a hole through the, through that second story to the first story, and they're putting in some stairs with a landing and everything. Uh, they're, they're, they're in the process of doing that right now. Um, four twenty-three Main, that's next to the old Basketville. Um, that's where they're doing the apartment over, and they have the office studios. If you've been there by there lately, you'll see they started the side, the outside, they've got the dormers up. They did the roof solar, uh, building looks really nice. Uh, it, it was in dire need of, of repair. They've got the inside all conditioned off, so, so that's looking really nice for the, for the area. And then I listed new upcoming projects, uh, probably most people have heard about that Noble Energy Travel Center. That's at the old Ford Truck Stop. Um, it's going to be that convenience store, restaurant, uh, cafe. They're going to have a showroom where they're going to have electric cars. Uh, if anybody wants to see the plans, I know that, uh, they're planning off the album. Um, another project coming up is Rapsgalian, they're going to open a taproom with light food, uh, similar to their own old site. Uh, it's on, uh, it's on the same road, and it's crossing the senior center, and it's above the, uh, Home Field Brewery. Uh, what they're going to do is they're going to have the taproom, they actually have took all their, their, um, tanks and everything, and they moved them to Spencer, and they're going to actually produce that, uh, beer in Spencer, Mass on, uh, there's a little cut across road, there's a big Y, and there's a, uh, they have their highway department there, right across the street is where they're going to be located for, for making their, their beer. And then, uh, twenty-nine Brookfield Road, where you'll com- um, compatible canine was. Um, it looks like we might be getting a, uh, George's Pizza Shop in there, I know he's working on it. He, we've seen the prints and stuff, and he's, he's started the initial process of, uh, making out permits or applications for permits, I should say. Um, the other thing is a hundred, uh, Chelton Road, that Hobbs Brook Plaza. Um, they are repairing that failed, uh, retaining wall. Uh, as you go on a plaza to the Uh, as you go on the plaza to the left and the back, they've had some problems on it, and they're fixing it. Uh, the other thing is Conestown Bank, if you go down to the club building, the outside entrance, where we have that display board, uh, it'll show uh, Conestown Bank, what they plan to do for the front of it, they're gonna re redo it, it it looks more modern, they're getting rid of the cubilos, they're changing the whole front of it, and it 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 looks looks nice, uh, if you wanna see it, you can go down there and see it. And then as far as training, I just wrote down, you know, the one must a group, I was at their, uh, from Phil Winery, I did virtual meetings, and things like that for training. And uh, basically, that's that's my report.
Any questions on the report?
Um, yeah, Nelson, you you're very busy. Can you just say again where Rapscallion's tap room's going? My reception wasn't great where I was sitting.
Uh, crossing the Senior Center, um, above uh, above the old brewery there, the Home Field Brewery, right in the corner of uh, Island Road, that red, when you take that right to Island Road, that little, that red building where they used to have the antiques, the upper floor, they're moving there.
I just had one follow-up on five oh eight international, and I apologize if you sent this email or information and I missed it. Um, you had sent that letter to the uh, business, um, indicating, you know, what is and isn't allowed under zoning, and that you need a site uh, plan review, et cetera, that letter. Um, and I think in the letter, you asked um, five oh eight international's attorney in the future to send a list of what they plan to do for activities. And I'm just wondering, was there any follow-up? Did any council send a response to that, a let, that letter, indicating what activities um, they are planning, if you were to ask this?
Uh, I'll refer to Jeff, and I don't think we did, did we, Jeff?
I've gotten nothing writing, in writing from representatives of five oh eight. I did speak to him on the phone, and they were still reviewing the contents of the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Nelson, I know I asked this last time, is there any way to get a lodge printout of the permit?
When you say lodge, you mean in 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 print itself?
In print, in print.
Yeah, I'll I'll talk to Cindy and Janie, and I'll see what we can do.
Yeah, because it's really.
Okay. I I don't think I realize that's what you meant, Mary, but yeah, I agree with you, it's pretty small.
Oh.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone else thinks it's small, but.
I will do that.
I'm the old, I'm the oldest one, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting up there too, Mary, so I understand.
Okay, so, nothing else? Okay, have a good night, and uh, nice Christmas and a happy new year.
Merry Christmas, Nelson, to you and your family.
Thank you, same to everybody there, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, dropped the papers. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Department, D P W. What? Thinking when I'm smiling. But he's not. Jeff, we can start yours.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is he back? There he is. Butch, you're up.
Yeah, I'm back. Sorry about that, I had a crash. Am I up?
Yes, you are.
Okay, uh, let's see, I have two reports, I have uh, October, November. I don't have as much to report as Nelson did, most of my stuff is regular maintenance, leaves, grass, uh, we started getting ready for snow and ice in October, thank God. Um, we calibrated the trucks, uh, put in all the drop boxes in for the uh, voting, it was something different. Uh, snow and ice training, we did in October. And November, um, nothing really, another snowstorm, I mean, a first snowstorm, I might add. And then uh, we did a little, uh, we're we're planning to do some pesticide training, that's one thing new. Because uh, we need, in order to spray the curb line, which I really like to do, because it really saves us a lot of time, but it's very expensive to have somebody else do it. So we're looking into uh, getting a couple guys licensed so we can do it ourselves. So that should, that should be good. And uh, I'm happy to report my new foreman, uh, is doing really well, he had a very trying weekend, but uh, he's hanging in there, and I think he's gonna be a great addition. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Ian?
Um, I don't have a question, I just had a comment. Um, I noticed Butch was pretty active this weekend in responding to people uh, on Facebook and other ways of that their street maybe wasn't plowed up to enough, and he quickly reacted to it, and just him reaching out publicly to people like that, I think is great. People get to see that their, um, people working for them in town are engaged and looking to do the best service they can, so, just good job.
Yeah, the new guy, Dave, is uh, he's just like me, and so he's 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 into it, so that should help me a lot, so, it's good.
Yeah, good.
Anything else?
I've said.
Mary?
But you always do such a good job, and I know it was only our first snowstorm, but are you gonna have some crew on Route twenty to do the sidewalks? Some businesses are, it's all shoveled, and then others, it's all ice and snow. And I know a lot.
Yeah, normally, we would do it the next day, but we, it was Sunday, and that would cost us a fortune, so we we did it today. We uh, we did all the way to Route twenty, all the way to Southbridge from the D P W today, and we're working on the Fisdell end, and whatever we didn't finish, we'll finish tomorrow.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Okay, and Ian, speaking of the good job in Facebook, I liked your comment on it, that when people have questions, they really ought to call the town and complain instead of just putting it on Facebook. I think, you know, I give Butch credit, that he reads it and gets back to the people on Facebook, but people really do need to notify the town, so.
Yes, I mean, I agree, I could work. They should go to the website and just send me an email, because I have a link on the website, so they could send it, and it comes right to my phone, so I'll see it, I'll probably get it maybe even quicker, because I don't don't always check that site. Somebody actually alerted me the fact that somebody was talking about a street that had been missed, and I went and looked.
Yeah, they they don't always pop up immediately on the website either, so, so.
On the Facebook, yeah.
Facebook, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Butch.
Yeah.
So have a nice Christmas and a happy new year.
Thank you, you too. Stay safe.
No snow.
Butts.
Yeah, I can only hope.
Okay, next, we have the Town Administrator's update.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll go item by item. Uh, the first item is the holiday hours. Uh, given the town's history with the day before the holiday, uh, Christmas holiday, and the fact that we're only open a half-day Friday and and those kind of things, so we're looking for Thursday and Friday, Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and Friday, the twenty-fifth, to be closed all day. And that will leave one hour that the staff need to make up, either through working till five o'clock one night, or using a vacation day to level out the holiday hours versus the vacation or the the work week. Um, and then the following week, for New Year's, uh, will be closed at one P M on that Thursday, the thirty-first. So that's what it shapes up to look like for the holiday hours for this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns on that. No?
Um, I think it's it's totally reasonable and a good idea to close that Thursday, to give them the full holiday, which is Friday. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I personally, um, as a matter of policy, wouldn't require them to to work till five or make up that additional hour. Um, I know every year's different, I think they've worked really hard during this pandemic, um, and um, you know, it's been added stress for everybody. We're talking about an hour, I would just, unless, you know, Jeff objects and the board objects, my my own view is to just close at four o'clock on Monday, the twenty-first, as usual, and forget the hour this year, without prejudice for future years. So I just want to put that out there.
Comments from the board?
Okay, sounds great.
Somebody say something?
Yeah, I I agree with Mary, this year's been an off year with COVID, and I I agree, forget the hour, and, you know, enjoy the holidays.
Yeah, can I just get a motion with that, you know, as Mary said, without prejudice, and that way we can make it official, and we'll get the information out, and we'll be good to go. I have no concern over the waiving of the hour, just, it just adds up in the personnel rules, that's all.
Mary? I'll make a motion on that we, um, approve the memorandum um, by Jeff, indicating what the holiday hours will be, with the exception that the hour that would need to be made up, um, for the additional hour of vacation, be waived this year without prejudice.
Second, Chase.
Any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Okay, and Jeff, I assume that part of the motion without prejudice means we are not making this a practice?
That would be my understanding.
That's my intent in my motion.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll just have to worry about it seven years from now.
I'll vote yes. Right, some of you will. Hey, Jeff, you still going?
Still going. Um, Heal has asked for a letter of impact on the community from their facility being in town. This is for their license renewal. Uh, given that they're not open, we put together a draft of a letter, it's in your packet, uh, on anticipated impacts. This was reviewed by K P Law, and they found it to be broad enough and specific enough at the same time to address uh, the request from Heal. I'll just ask for any comments on the letter before we send it. If you have no comments, or anything else. Um, they still have an issue getting product, that's why they're not open, but they are pursuing their license renewal.
Does anyone have any comments on the letter?
Okay. Also, if there's no comments on the letter.
Hey, could we have a motion then to have Jeff sign?
Okay, that's fine.
Hey, is there a motion then to um, have Jeff sign the letter and send it?
So move, Chase.
Second, Mike.
Second? Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, few more items, one more in the in the packet. Terry Masterson, our new economic development coordinator, did a really good analysis of the meal and lodging tax revenues, and the differences between what we've seen historically and what in Sturbridge in the past, and comparing that to um, the current state of affairs, along with other towns. So I think that provides a pretty good snapshot of where we are on those two revenue streams, which support the general fund and they support Betterment. So um, as we get more information each quarter, we'll update that report, and kind of keep track of that, and submit some new information each quarter to the board. Um, it's been given to the Sturridge Tourist Association as well, uh, for planning purposes, and just to understand where we are in that revenue stream. Uh, not in the packet, um, we have to declare the parking ban.
Okay, is it, oh, it's women, excuse me, Jeff?
Yeah.
I just have um, question on that, it's a very well written comparison. On page seventy-three, it says, when possible, data is converted to calendar months and years away from fiscal year. Um, could you get more specific on which dated that would be? Because I do know the um, town motel tax, money that we put into our fiscal year budget, not our yearly budget.
Right. I think um, he's converting, I can get a better detail on that for you, I don't want to speak for Terry. He explained it to me, and I kind of understand it, but I want to make sure he and I are on the same page with that. I think the way it's reported is calendar year, and the way we catalog it, it's fiscal, so one quarter is first quarter annual, and then we report, and that's actually third quarter for us. So I just want to make sure we're talking about the same things. But I'll get with Terry on that and get you something on that.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I don't know how the rest, board, I didn't know how the rest of the board feels, but when I read this, I was pleased that we were only down fifteen percent.
Right.
I anticipated a bigger decline, so.
Yeah, the meals tax held up okay, it's the lodging tax that that took a, that suffered tremendously, and that was to be expected.
Right. Right.
I mean, there's, there was a lot of um, outdoor dining and a lot of takeout, so, it's also. Right.
Okay, all right, I'll get you that.
Okay, hey, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, um, I guess we have to declare the parking ban for the year, uh, from November fifteenth through April first, is the parking ban?
Um, we we announced that in a previous meeting.
Did you? Okay, good. All right, we've got a parking ban.
Yes, no, I remember, because I always look up when it's got.
Okay.
Yes.
We got a parking ban.
All right. All right, uh, next, couple more things.
It may be, it may be bears repeat.
But the, I guess the parking ban is between the days.
Is that on the web?
We can make sure it's on the website. All right. Okay, um, we did not get the Mas Works grant for the parking lot at five oh one Main, so we'll finish the design and seek funding for the construction, either through a different grant source or at the town meeting in June. We got a memo from the School Committee about the budget process and budget liaisons. I think Alex sent this out to you all this afternoon, and you can take a look at that when you get a chance. Also, at the last meeting, we talked about the new sewer pump station to serve the fiscal area that's currently served by Southbridge. Uh, we got a number on the design, it's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Unfortunately, we have to wait for town meeting to appropriate those funds, so we won't be able to start that project till June, or by some. that project till June. Or by some happenstance, we're able to have a town meeting in a, where people feel comfortable, which I don't foresee in the near future. So we'll have to wait on that project till town meeting in June. Um, so that's what I have this evening, Madam Chair, if there's any questions.
Hey, any questions, Speaker? Okay, next, Tony.
I just had a question. Uh, the, the proposal for the pump station also includes the force main. I, I would think there'd be a force main going from the Southbridge line all the way back to, um, uh, to the area of Annie's Kitchen, or I guess that's where the sewer fix up.
That's correct. It would...
So that, that includes the design of the pump station and force main, I think?
Yes, uh, pump station, force main, and then there's another pump station along the way that needs to be analyzed to see if it's got enough capacity. And Butch can probably give you more detail on that than I can.
Exactly.
Oh, that's right. It involves, yep, it involves that pump station. We'd get a, we'd have to take up some property down by, um, uh, the Southbridge line of 131. We pump it back up to like Mike said, right around the Annie's area. Then it would flow gravity down to the Hobbsburg pump station. Then we have them looking at Hobbsburg to make sure those pumps can handle the load.
Okay.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, that, I just wanted to make sure that, that seemed like a good budget estimate.
Yep. So...
Okay, next we have action item. First one is... Did I interrupt you, Jeff?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
A consideration and possible acceptance of the resignation of Mr. Kane from the Sturbridge Police Department. Chief, you want to say a few words on that?
Good evening again. Uh, Mr. Kane was with us very short amount of time and he just, uh, in his, uh, letter of resignation, he did, he cited that, uh, the cost of his health insurance was more than he was anticipating and he was going to, uh, seek other employment. I think he was here for about a month. And he was a dispatcher.
Hey, any questions from the board? Is there a motion then to accept the resignation?
This is Mike and I, uh, I make a motion to accept the letter of resignation effective November 16th, 2020.
There's second?
Second, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Ian, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have a consideration and possible acceptance of resignation of Jacqueline Becker from the Sturbridge Fire Department. There is a letter from Chief Grasso and in it, she just explains that she doesn't really have the time needed to commit to this position. So is there a motion to accept resignation?
Uh, Ian will accept the resignation of Jacqueline Becker from the Sturbridge Fire Department with regrets.
There's second?
Yep, second, Chase.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
And Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay. Next we have consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the following donations to the Town of Sturbridge Council on Aging from Mr. Don Taffet of the Clayborg Quakum Kossic Lake Association. And they include five $40 gift cards and four $25 gift cards to Stop &amp; Shop, two $20 gift cards and four $25 gift cards to Big Y, one $20 gift card to Shaw's, 25 frozen turkeys. Is there a motion to accept the donations with gratitude?
So move, Mike.
There's second?
Second, Chase.
Okay, discussion. Ian, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Chase?
Chase, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the acceptance of donation of 36 Thanksgiving meals donated to the Town of Sturbridge Council on Aging by a small proprietor of the Old Village Grill to the Council on Aging and a resident Craig Moran. We're a motion to accept with gratitude.
So move, regret.
Second, Ian.
A discussion. Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Hey, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Ian, yes.
And I vote yes. Next we have consideration and possible action on an amendment to contract with Violia to include repairs and improvements for groundwater inflow and infiltration. Okay, um, Jeff or Butch, would you like to explain, please?
I can do it. Um, what it is, is we have a mandate by the DEP to, uh, do an INI study for our entire system. Uh, we put in a proposal for a 10-year program and so now we have to start doing it. And we're actually kind of late. We really need to get on this. Um, but we have, we got two proposals from, one from Violia, one from Weston and Sampson, which is another big engineering company. The proposals were virtually identical and , uh, so it's, it's my opinion that we should stay with Violia because they know the system. They've been working here for 11, 12 years, whatever it is. They do daily, daily work on the system, so they really do know our system. And they've actually done some of the camera work already. So the recommendation is to go with them for this project. We already have the money appropriated for 2020.
Hey, Butch, where is that appropriated from? Is it in the water?
I think it's in the sewer budget.
Sure. Okay. And could you please, um, just quickly tell the audience what inflow and infiltration is?
Yes, when you have, uh, your sewer system is a collection system. So if you have breaches in the system, you have cracks in the pipes or, or joints that are leaking, or manholes that are leaking, or manhole covers that are leaking, all that groundwater goes into the sewer system. So we end up treating that and paying to treat that groundwater. So this is a program to stop that and ultimately should, if we have a lot of infiltration, it should, um, help our plant because we have a lot less pollution when we have these big rainstorms.
Okay, any questions from the board? Mike?
I, I got two questions. Uh, the first one is, uh, you know, I know in a town like Sturbridge, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the groundwater, in addition to, to leaks in the pipes, comes from sump pumps. Is there a part of...
Yes, that's part of it.
...II program that will investigate sump pumps and...
Yeah, we're going to be doing smoke testing.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of it is smoke testing so we can identify those. But the problem with that is, I mean, ultimately, once we walk away from the house, we know what's going to happen. But, uh, we'll do the best we can.
So, so that, that's hard to enforce, but to get, get the sump pumps out of the system, because we've got a relatively new system compared to...
Yes.
...other towns and, and, uh...
Almost, yeah.
I, I would suspect a lot of our info, uh, inflow into the system is sump pumps. Uh, the second part of this is the, the memo we got says that there's a $105,000 appropriation and the total project looks like it's going to be like around $145,000. So are we going to go for a, to town meeting this spring for another $40,000?
No, the, um, the intent is, we have enough for this year.
Yeah.
And then the intent was later on, you'll see on your, on your agenda, there's a rate study that we're hoping to go, go through to start and, and appropriate the funds through the sewer water system.
Okay.
Wait a minute, let me, uh...
Yes?
Yeah, the first year cost of the program is $75,000. It's the year, subsequent years thereafter, that's $70,000.
For you.
Yeah, but that extra $40,000 has to come from somewhere, somewhere. So I, I guess Butch is saying it's going to come from user fees, uh, sewer, uh, enterprise.
No, the $70,000 is for the second year thereafter. So if you look, the first, the first year, the...
Are you interested in a two-year contract?
This is a multi-year contract. It, it, the, the re, what we've done is amend the Violia contract to add this work to it. So this, we're supposed to have a 10-year plan.
Yeah.
Rather than create a 10-year plan, we created a plan with Violia that every year they'll do more of the work. So the first year is $75,000. The subsequent years is $70,000. So the most we're spending in one year at this time is $75,000.
Okay.
Okay, then is somebody willing to make a motion to amend the contract with Violia to include repairs and improvements for groundwater inflow and, and infiltration?
I'll make a motion to amend the contract with Viola to approve the first amendment to the agreement for service between the town and Viola for inclusion of the INI study and mitigation improvements on the town's wastewater collection system.
There's second?
Well, second, second motion, Ian.
A discussion. Hey, Chase, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Mary?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on a right of first refusal for 44 Allen Road, notice of intent to sell pursuant to general law, chapter 61A. Consideration of the notice received by the town, sell for residential use when removed from classification, proximally one quarter acre of the property. Okay, Jeff, this one's all straightened out now?
It is. Uh, we've received all the information we need. The planning board and the Conservation Commission are recommending not acquiring the property. Um, so I'd ask the Board of Selectmen to release the property and not purchase it or not pursue purchasing it.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is there a motion then to have, for the town to waive their right of first refusal on 44 Allen Road?
So move, Chase.
Second, Mike.
A discussion. Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Hey, Mary?
Yes.
Hey, Chase?
Chase, yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
And I vote yes. Okay, so Ethan, you're all set?
Thank you. I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Okay, have a nice holiday with everyone.
All right, you as well. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on chaplain program with the Sturbridge Police slash Fire Department. Imagine Earl, you'd like to discuss this?
Oh, yeah. No, it's a program I'm looking forward to bringing into, uh, the police department. You know, over the years, we've always had an employee assistant program, but this isn't the same. We're going to have local clergy, uh, that have volunteered to become part of this program, help both the police and fire employees, their families, community members, uh, whoever needs the program, uh, whoever needs to speak with somebody, whoever, if an officer is, uh, needs somebody to go talk to and wants, wants some type of privacy, they'll be able to do that. Um, so I've been working with the, uh, town administrator and three local pastors, Pastor Esteban Carrasco of the House of Destiny Church in Southbridge, Pastor Matt Zimmerman of the Light Song Church here in Sturbridge, Pastor Dan Portell of the Bethlehem Lutheran Church in town, and they are all very excited to get this program up and running. It will be the first time, uh, Sturbridge, as far as I know, has ever had a police chaplain program.
Okay, comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, you know, I noted that, uh, that the, uh, the number of chaplains that, that are in the program isn't a set number. If, if any, uh, any, uh, pastor or minister or, uh, uh, rabbi or, uh, Inan wanted to join as a chaplain, would they, I presume they would be open to appointment as a chaplain. Is that correct? As long as it went through the Academy program?
That's correct. We would be open for any, anybody locally that would like to participate in this. And, uh, that way we can reach all corners of the community and not leave anybody out.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, since all, all three of the initial chaplains are all, you know, Christian based, I just wanted to make, you know, get out there in the open and it's, uh, open to all, all religions, uh, and, uh, in, in the policy. And I just wanted the public to know that. So, uh, the, the, the three initial chaplains, uh, that are proposed, they've all been through the police academy training program?
Uh, Pastor Esteban Carrasco has. Pastor Matt Zimmerman is active duty, uh, or reservist chaplain in the United States Air Force. Pastor Dan Portell is currently in the process of getting into the program. They need a total of 10 pastors to have the program come out here to Sturbridge. So once, once they have a total of 10, I think they're up to about seven now. Once they get a few more, they're going to get the program, they're going to put everybody through the school and get moving on the project.
Great.
Okay, anything else? Okay, is there a motion then to adopt the policy for the police slash fire department chaplain program?
Uh, this is Mike and I'll make a motion to adopt the policy, um, and, and the three, uh, proposed initial chaplains, uh, uh, to adopt the recommendation of the, uh, the police chief and town administrator.
Uh, Mary, and I will second it.
Okay, discussion. Hey, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next, on the agenda, we have old business. Yes, COVID-19.
Yep, um, I think as we, well, first... Yep, um, I think as we well, first, there's a there's an email from Robin in the packet that talks about the ionizers. We we were looking at iron putting ionizers in other town buildings, and she kind of explores the possibilities in each one of the buildings. Um, really comes down to the type of heat system that's in place. Some um some are more challenging to do than others. For for instance, Town Hall with all those wall units, we'd have to put ionizers in each one, which really isn't feasible at this point. Um, so we're still exploring what we can do with ionizers, but it doesn't look hopeful to be able to deploy broadly across the town buildings uh like we did at Burgess Elementary. Um, other COVID-related items, um, expecting, go ahead.
What page is that? When it's Jeff, Mary, I read it, but I lost it.
Page one eighty-five.
One eighty-four?
I have one eighty-five.
Yeah. I pulled out different as we were talking about things, I got all my papers mixed up. So are there any air purifiers in the senior center or?
I I don't know, they may have some mobile units or some stand-up or, you know, purchased units. I don't know that they have it integral to the systems at the building.
Well, I would suggest, I I understand that there are no options to ionize, but um I'm gonna suggest that we use some COVID money to um at least purchase some air purifiers for the different for the community room um and where they eat and that type of thing.
Okay.
I know the schools, um, I know at least one private school that has air purifiers that they use COVID money. Well, they didn't get COVID money, it's private, but they have air purifiers in in all the classrooms um and in the different staff rooms, and it would seem to me that that would be a good idea for our at least our seniors, since we do have COVID money.
Right. And just so you know, the building is closed.
Jeff, could you um have Robin check into that?
No, I know, but I know, I know it's not us right now, but at some point, we will reopen once the vaccine is available, and I don't think, you know, from what the medical experts say, it's not gonna go away entirely.
Nope.
This virus, and so I think it would be money well spent, and in terms of food.
Sure, makes sense. I'll have Robin look into that.
It's closed to the public, or are there employees working there?
There is staff in the building.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
And even for our town hall.
Also, on the COVID front, we're awaiting the deployment um plan for the vaccine. Uh, Board of Health is gonna utilize, based upon my conversation with Ken Lacy, the health agent, uh, the flu the flu vaccine protocols uh and the distribution sites that they've practiced on over the past couple of years, that will be kind of their base plan on the deployment of the vaccine when it becomes widely available. Uh, but as we go further into the month and into next year, we'll have more information on that. That's all I have for COVID, Madam Chair.
Okay, anything else on the COVID? Okay, next we have the septicage. Okay, Jeff or Butch?
Um, at the last meeting, I can jump in here, or Butch, you wanna take it?
Um, not really.
Okay.
Shane's on.
Is Shane on?
Shane's on, too.
Shane, are you here?
I don't see him.
Yeah, I'm on. Call number four.
All right. Shane, um, well, I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in and let Shane jump in after me. So Shane continued to look at the septicage rates, and he did some research in his excerpts from the emails in the packet, and he's recommending, as of January first, we increase our septicage rates to seven cents a gallon. And Shane, I'll let you go deeper into that. Shane? Where'd you go?
Is he there, Shane?
Shane? Shane, you're muted. There you go.
Okay.
Now he's open.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So after the last meeting, I was notified that Spencer and North Brookfield were going to seven cents on their septicage prices. I made some phone calls to both Spencer and North Brookfield and verified that they were going up to seven cents starting January first. Um, so therefore, and as I said the last time, stay competitive. Um, I think we should have the same price as them, so I'm recommending that the septicage for both in-town and out-of-town at January first go to seven cents.
Any questions from the board?
I this is Mike. Mike, and I just wanted to say that I did take up uh Shane's offer to go take a look at the uh septicage handling facility at the wastewater treatment plant, and uh we do have a very nice facility there, uh probably one of the best around. Uh, and, you know, I at this point, I would concur with uh what Shane's recommending. Uh, that will add another um approximately thirty thousand dollars in revenue to the town and uh or at least to our enterprise, and uh so I I think it'll help out a little bit, but, you know, we got that's one of the things on the on our sewer rates that we should keep an eye on, that uh I I think uh in this particular area of the state, the uh rates are lower than anywhere else, and I agree, we have to remain competitive, otherwise we'll lose, you know, the opportunity for that revenue, but I think seven I even think seven cents is well, last time, last uh meeting, I had, you know, mentioned at, you know, around eight cents a gallon at this time, but I work with seven cents. Uh, but with the caveat that we should keep an eye on it, and if the market rate goes up to eight cents next year, so be it, we should, you know, try to get that rate up higher, because it's it's not, there's nowhere else in the that I can find in in the state of Massachusetts that the rates are down, you know, five, six, seven cents, so it's just in the Sturbridge, Southbridge, Spencer, North Brookfield area.
Mary?
Um, Shane, I want to thank you for following up, but I really want to thank Mike publicly for pushing on this beca- because you persisted and believed that we were too low, and we had Shane go back and again and look at the other towns, and I just want to thank you for bringing it to our attention, because this is something that is not in my, you know, area of knowledge, forget expertise, and um you were proactive, because even if the other towns weren't increasing, we could have increased because there was a reason for it, and I think that's probably why Spencer went up, and um so I just want to thank you, Mike, for pushing on it, and Shane for your willingness to follow up on Mike's concern.
Okay, Chase?
Welcome.
I just wanted to thank Shane for taking the time out. I went and did a tour of the facility, and I can definitely tell you that Shane knows his stuff down there, and uh I appreciate you taking the time, Shane.
No problem, you're welcome.
Okay, so is there a motion to increase the septicage charge to seven cents per gallon gallon, adding January first, twenty twenty-one?
So move, Mike.
Second, Chase.
Second? Discussion. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Chase?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Shane.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, have good holidays.
Merry Christmas, Shane.
Same to you, I'll see you the next day.
Oh, you will, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I had to keep track. Next on the agenda is the American Legion request.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, Madam Chair, at the last meeting, you you all received a letter from the American Legion asking some relief from the permit fees or the annual renewal fees. Um, I provided you a breakdown of their fees and also a breakdown of uh the revenues collected, not just from the Legion, but for all of these types of uh annual renewal fees that we collect. Uh, the liquor fees are total fifty-three thousand three ninety, and all those other Board of Selectmen licenses, you see down at the bottom, common vic, amusement device, live entertainment, and the other ones, it's about seventy-three hundred dollars a year that the town collects on the on those types of fees, so I don't know if the board wants to. I also did speak to Phil. He said any kind of help would be appreciated. Their big revenue stream is leasing out the facility for parties and groups and events, which due to COVID, they haven't been able to do, so they are, as most businesses are in this environment, challenged to uh to keep going, so.
Okay, I know, uh, last meeting, um, we all expressed our sympathy for them. I also did, but I also said, you know, if you start two minutes for one, we have to do it for everybody, even though this is the first one to ask, but everybody is hurting, and it's really, it's really too bad for everyone, but I would not be in favor of waiving the fee. Okay, anyone else?
Uh, go ahead, no.
Mary? Um, with all due respect to our chair, I I do know that um we always have a concern not to be creating a precedent that applies to everyone, but these are this is our veterans' organization, and to me, that stands on separate footing from other organizations, um, and I think I would like to do something to help them um at the local level, and I don't have any problem, in my mind, distinguishing that group from other private um businesses or organizations, so I'll just say that for the record.
Okay, Mary, every group is special. Granted, the veterans are probably more special, but we've gotten out to pick groups, we picked the schools because of the kids, we're picking the veterans, and who else is on the senior center? It's um a precedent that really shouldn't be setting. If you want to help them out, go down and buy a Christmas tree.
Well, no, we set policy, and it's a matter of our discretion, and we always have to draw the line. We're just drawing it at different points. Um, so, I mean, that's that's where I stand on that. The federal government, we have a lot of programs for veterans at the federal and state level that are not programs for private organizations, so we draw that distinction at the federal and state level all the time, so I guess I I don't agree with that, but I, you know, obviously, it's for the rest of the board um to consider, I'm just telling you what my views are, and I do think in a year of a pandemic, it is a year of exceptions. I do believe that as well.
Okay, don't forget the town pays the bills, some of the bills, from down there.
I agree, but like when I when I talked about the senior center wanting ioniz, that was gonna come from COVID money, that wasn't coming from our budget, so that's different. Um, granted, the schools, we're giving we're giving COVID money back, so in terms of us trying to create cleaner air for the senior center, that's definitely COVID-related, so I wouldn't group that together with the vote on the abatement for the water.
No, no, no.
Highly different events.
Mary, I don't want to argue with you, I don't want to argue with you, but I didn't say anything, I said we pay water and sewer for the senior center and other things. I didn't say anything about.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't know what you were talking about in terms of the senior center and how it related to the Legion's request for some type of allegiance, so anyway, that's just my that's just my view, and I'm not expecting the rest of the board to agree, but it is a policy matter, and that's how I stand on on that.
Yeah, and I do believe our policy should be a little bit more consistent. Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, uh, this is Mike, and I've received several phone calls uh asking where people can donate. At our last meeting, we the men, there was some mention of donating money to to the American Legion uh laundry post, and uh is there uh can can we ask whether we can, is it possible that we can put up a have ask the town administrator to talk with Phil and see if there's some way that we can put on town website, this is, you know, one, you know, where you can send some money to to help support the uh the post, because I know I know they haven't been able to, and Mary, you know, and I've been to to many, many uh 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 suppers there, and it's a really nice place for the community, and I I think uh we we have a moral obligation to help them out one way or another, and I I'd be glad to donate some of my money to the uh to the post to help them out, and I've had several phone calls from, you know, people that are interested in in helping the post out, so uh and that's in addition to anything that we may do here to help help, because I know they're not, I know they're struggling, uh they they haven't had the revenue from from the meals or any anything else that they do throughout the year, and uh so I'd I'd like to see if we can at least uh, you know, put something on the town website, this is a, and we do, we do, uh, I think we do have a line item uh that we we do pay for, make a uh um a payment to the post uh once a year to to help support the the veterans' organization. I think I think there's something in the town budget.
We do, it's not a lot.
Not a lot. That's another.
How we do treat them differently, because there is a line item for our support, you're right.
There's um also money that they get from the town for the Memorial Day dinner afterwards and everything, and I had mentioned to Jeff that someone said that they receive rentals for their parking lot, too, for overflow from some of the other restaurants, however, that's been diminished, too. But Jeff, can you put something and check on the process of um getting donations, because a lot of people make donations to the senior center programs, um fire departments and everything, and then we can put it up on the bulletin board.
Sure, I'll get with Mr.
Okay, so any other comments?
Okay.
Okay, um, okay, next, on the agenda, we have the uh, give a local root term side service.
No, D, we're in eight D.
Yes.
Yeah, on eight D, under Old Business, um, at the two thousand, at the two thousand nineteen town meeting.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. At the two thousand nineteen uh town meeting, thirteen thousand dollars was put aside for a water and sewer rate study. Um, we're back, uh, based upon the conversations we had the last couple of meetings, uh, we want to go ahead and authorize that RFP and get that on the street to get get proposals to do the rate study. Uh, we talked about this about a year ago. Uh, we did look at the tie-in bond website to see how it's constructed, but it's it's, you know, it's a mix of your it's a mix of your local issues, long-term capital plans. So it needs to be a little bit more than just taking rates from other communities and putting it together. So we'd want to go ahead and solicit some proposals for the rate studies and bring them back to the board for review.
Any comments or questions?
Um, I have a comment.
Hey.
It's just that I've been through this process in another town, and it is a very arduous and complicated process. And the company we actually did with Tyon Bond, and they put together a very extensive spreadsheet program through Excel where they could actually show us exactly what we would get for each type of rate increase. We could do a two percent for every year. We could do an eight percent every other year, or a four percent every third year, whatever you want to do to make our free cash numbers come up. And it was, I thought it was well worth the money.
Okay, comments? Jesse said Tyon Bond didn't get that.
No, we've not solicited yet the proposal. I just wanted to send this to you first before we went out and send it out to the different companies.
Oh, I thought...
No, we just, you know, the comment we got several months ago was... Yeah. So this has not been on the street yet.
Only for interest.
Yeah. I just want to take any comments.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Yeah. One issue that we have is irrigation and how to get equity for the few irrigation meters that we have. It's, you know, we should have some kind of equity to the homeowners if we do, if we have irrigation meters. So I'd be looking for some recommendation of, you know, what to do with, you know, the fact that we have condos that have irrigation meters and private residences that don't, and which is disproportionately affecting the bills for the individual residences and the condo maybe getting a break on their sewer rates. So if there's some way of adding that to the scope of services, I'd like to see that.
Under project objectives number two, we addressed that. It may need to be worded differently.
Page one ninety-seven.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at, oh, secondary meters, okay. Yeah, to separate out irrigation costs from sewer fees.
Yep.
So, okay. Just want to propose, we're looking for some way of, I didn't see that in there when I said the secondary meters and quit.
Yep.
Okay, somebody willing to make a motion then to authorize the solicitation of quotes for the water and sewer rate study?
Oh, this is Mike, and I'll make a motion to really, ask the town administrator to release the request for written quotes for a twenty-twenty water and sewer rate study.
For second?
Second, Chase.
Question? Ace, how do you vote?
Yes, Chase.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes, Mike.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, now new business. Must have trouble with my alphabet sometime. A, caregiver, local roots, curbside service. Jeff, do you want to address that, please?
Yes, and Dean and Mike are on the phone tonight from caregiver local roots to answer specifics. But they're proposing to offer curbside service when they open up in the spring. It's consistent with the Cannabis Control Commission rules, and they provided a detailed plan to the planning board and to Chief Desert, which they have, the planning board's gonna hear it tomorrow night, but they want to make sure that they're consistent with the community's needs. So they're here this evening just to get your comments on the curbside service. We did have a conversation with KP Law about its impact on the host community agreement, and the curbside service is consistent with the host community agreement. But Dean and Mike are here just to make sure that they cover all their bases with this curbside service. So...
Hey, anybody on the board have a question or a comment? Ace?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's a good idea with everything that's going on today. I mean, having a curbside service that's gonna, you know, limit the amount of people in one building, I think it's a good thing. And just a second note, the building looks great. You guys have done a really, really good job with it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, this is Mike, and I concur with what Chase just said one hundred percent. You know, it's looking really good, and we look forward to you opening soon. The, my only question is, you know, comparing this to, say, the wine and malt license that we just changed the location on. Does KP Law think that we can do this without an amendment to the, you know, just to the agreement, just simply saying that we, you know, that the location includes curbside pickup outside of the building? Because I think the agreement was very specific on security inside the building. I mean, there's a lot of wording in the agreement about, you know, the stages one has to go through just to even get inside the building, identification by driver's license and all that. And I see in this proposal that they were checking licenses at the curbside and things like that. And it's all well and good, but either, if it, you know, if KP Law says it doesn't require that the board sign anything in writing, that's, I guess that's fine with me. But it just seems like the type of thing that there should be written consent by the board. I, you know, just my gut.
The...
I don't, I, it's just my gut reaction that it, we should have it in writing and sign it. Just my gut reaction to this type of situation. I'm in favor of it, but, but just...
Hey, Jesse. I think you ran it by Uncle.
I did, and that was my gut reaction, too. There's got to be some requirement for an approval. The Cannabis Control Commission rules require, you know, that this be consistent with the host community agreements. We reviewed, you know, KP reviewed the host community agreements. Our provision has delivery service as the fallback to the board signing off on that as a formal acceptance. So we didn't anticipate, we didn't contemplate curbside when we were doing the host community agreement. We were worried, we were concerned about long-term, the delivery of off-site to private residences, and that's where the host community agreement draws the line between needing a specific approval. But I think Dean is here this evening just to make sure he is consistent with the host community agreement and he is consistent with the wishes of the Board of Selectment.
Okay, Dean, would you like a motion from us for approval of this than it would be in writing?
If that's what the chairwoman in the board would like, sure, sure.
Well, I mean, it'll be in writing then.
Okay.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion then that the board approves the amended administrative order allowing curbside operation at, I keep forgetting the new name.
Local Roots.
Local Roots. Thank you. Which is kind of funny, because it's the least. That's okay. Someone willing to make that motion?
I am also moved, Chase.
Page one second.
Mike, second.
Any discussion? Hey, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Chase?
Yes, Chase.
And I vote yes.
May I just say two quick things?
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank the town again, because this process, working with you, has been, has been great, and it's been exciting for us. And we're humbled and happy that you like the work that we're doing there. And the second thing is I just want to say, Chase, after nine months of a pandemic and the first snowstorm in, you're looking about exactly the way I saw you look. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Have nice holidays.
Likewise.
Okay, next, we have write a first refusal, twenty-seven Lad Road.
Uh, yes, this was, this was a letter we received, but it's, this is part of the five oh eight international issue going on. This parcel is leased to five oh eight international for some of their events. It is in forestry land. It's in forestry. And we, the assessor did, not forestry, it was in chapter land. Because of its uses for commercial purposes, the assessors did do a rollback, and the owners are required to seek a write a first refusal. We did get this letter. I sent it to KP Law. It is not consistent with the statute. There's some missing information on it, which we've sent to the owners. Did not contain contact information for the owner's attorney. The notice was not sent by certified mail or hand-delivered. There's no indication that the notice was sent to the owners, by the owner to the Board of Assessors, the Planning Board, or the Conservation Commission, or state forester. And it does not say what the land is going to be used for. So we've notified the landowner that the notice is not sufficient, and we're seeking another one. So at this point, there is no timeframe running on the board's required action.
Hey, thank you. Okay. Ian, do you have any new business?
I do not.
Ian?
Okay, did we do old business already?
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, I have, I'm sorry, I had old business.
Well, we'll take your old business, Mary.
Okay, and then I had one new business. I, we moved on quickly, so I didn't have an opportunity under the request by Phil Corville. I reread his letter, and I am going to make a motion, and if the rest of the board doesn't want to support it, they don't have to. But I do want to make my own motion on policy. I'm looking at the request that they've made under their various licenses, which is on page one ninety-three, and their letter indicating that they were closed for six months. They have limited food service seating. I understand that's what restaurants have as well. But again, this is our organization for our veterans. So I am going to make a motion that with...
Wait a minute, I lost, I lost audio. Hold on.
Please enter your access code followed by the... To enable audio control, this conference will now be recorded.
Second?
Um, hold on, Madam Chair. The audio for the go-to meeting disconnected, so I'm gonna need a, I'm gonna need that motion repeated, please. I'm sorry. I had to reset the...
No worries. Okay, so I'm revisiting the request by Phil Corville. I had wanted to make a motion, but we moved on quickly. He indicates that they were shut down in operation for six months in two thousand and twenty in light of the pandemic, and as a result, they weren't able to function for those six months. It uses all of its raised funds for the care of the building and support to the community. They're asking for any help possible, and so my motion is, without prejudice for a few years, in light of the economic impact resulting for the pandemic, I'm making a motion to cut by fifty percent the license for the, to the building department in the amount of twenty dollars. The victorialess license, twenty dollars. The amusement device permit, twenty-five dollars, and the live entertainment permit, twenty dollars, in the amount of eighty-five dollars, which represents a fifty percent reduction in those license fees.
Ace, is there a second?
Yeah, Mike, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, Chase?
Yeah, I'd just like to, maybe we could, maybe we could put this off and just see what the donations bring, because I think we're gonna be surprised with how many people donate and what goes on with that. I don't know, maybe we want to just see what kind of happens with the money in the pot first. Because I do agree with you, Mary. I, but I just think there could be another avenue here that helps them even more.
Oh, yes, I need to vote. They'll probably... We get, hold on. I'm not gonna, thank you, Chase, I'm actually not gonna withdraw the motion, because if they get contributions from our businesses who are also hurting and our residents with the unemployment rate, kudos to them. But I think the town should set the example as well. I have difficulty taking donations from businesses readily and residents readily and having the town give no accommodation at our level. So I appreciate that. I hope that it does bring in some volunteer contribution, but I think that this small measure is really just a nod to the, what they do for our community and their request for some relief at the town level. So I think that if we do something, that will have the effect of possibly other people giving more. We're doing our part. But for us to give no relief whatsoever and then look to our businesses to give relief, to me, doesn't really set the example, although I appreciate what you're saying.
Okay, Chase, I do want to thank you for the suggestion, and I think it's a good one, and I think, I think it'll work out pretty well. I know a lot of the businesses, well, all the businesses are hurting. However, throughout the pandemic, they have still been quite generous to everything, the public house with their poco in things, and the Adelino's and all those, they have still been able to donate. So Jeff, I'm sure we could put something up, right?
Of course. I'll get with, I'll reach out to Mr. Corville tomorrow to find out what the arrangements could be, and we'll make sure that that gets published.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Uh, no.
Mike, how do you vote?
Uh, I'll vote yes.
Ace, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
And I vote no. So it's three to two.
And in the, in the event...
You know, Mary?
I have a question. In the event they've already paid it for the year... since we're at that stage of the year, we'll issue a check back to them.
Okay, Mary, we are now on new business still?
Okay, I just, yeah, I just have one new. So, I think that Local Roots has done a fabulous job in their building. And now, it's kind of like when you renovate your house, you know, you paint the kitchen and then you realize the living room looks terrible, et cetera, et cetera. I'm wondering if we can revisit trying to take down that "Welcome to Sturbridge" sign that is really not on the land they bought. Initially, I thought it was going to be on their land, so it's going to raise it with them. It's, it's really an eyesore. And I was just wondering, even if we can leave the brick, I know it's not our land, but reach out to the landowner, leave the brick and put a new "Welcome to Sturbridge" something. Because to me, now that I have that nice building right adjacent to it, it just sticks out. And I'd rather have nothing than have that "Welcome to Sturbridge" sign. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but...
Okay, Jeff, could you have Nelson check in to see or anyone in whose land it is? Because I believe it's probably the state's land that, not our land.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, but check in.
Yep.
Okay, Chase, new business?
Um, I do have a little thing. It's, it's not really a big deal, but, you know, I, a lot of kids this year don't get to see Santa. And we have the Sturbridge Fire Department Santa run this Sunday. And I didn't know if Chief Dessert would be whittling. And I don't want to step on the fire department's toes, but maybe put a couple of police cruisers on with it. Make it a little bigger deal for their residents because it is enjoyable.
I think that's great.
I'm not quite sure how, they probably do have that planned, but you could prob, just give the chief a call and make a suggestion.
Well, he's still, he's still on the call tonight, I think. Earl, are you still there?
Oh. Yeah, I'm still here. That's not, not a problem. That's Sunday. We'll have, we'll have, as long as our patrols aren't tied up, we will definitely have a cruiser or two involved.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chase.
Great idea.
Thanks.
Mike, do you have new, uh...
No, I don't have any new business at this time. Thanks.
Ian, do you have new business?
I do not.
Okay, um, the only new business I have is the licenses are ready. And you did read that Alex wrote that they would like them done by Tuesday so that they can get mailed out. So, it does take a while because I went in and signed them. And there's a lot of them. Also, when you sign them, notice if there's anything you know of that's missing or anything you know of on any of those licenses that may need to be changed, okay? Okay, correspondence, Mike?
Yes, November 16th, there's a, a letter regarding number eight Brookville Road and Route 20 drainage repairs. The letter from Barry Glorian, District Highway Director to the Town of Sturbridge regarding the drainage repairs at eight Brookville Road. The, on November 17th, we got a letter from Charter Communications regarding upcoming changes. And the letter was from John Mayer, Director of Government Affairs, and it was addressed to the Town Administrator. November 20th, there's a, we received a copy of the Council on Aging newsletter for the month of December from Leslie Wong. On November 23rd, we received a pedestrian counter data, an email from Tom Chamberlain to Jeff Bridges.
Okay, excuse me for a minute, Mike, okay? Alex, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, okay. On that letter from Tom Chamberlain, it's L A N D.
Oh, okay, yep.
And then on his report to, to say Chamberlain.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that was, yeah, traffic, pedestrian counts for various areas of town, Shattuck Road and all that. November 23rd, Sturbridge Public Parking Lot Funding Letter, letter from Juan Vega, the Mass Works Program Director. And I believe Jeff said that it's, we didn't make to grant. Uh, the, then on November 24th, we got a letter from the ABCC, Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, regarding a reminder for the holidays, for gatherings related to alcohol. And on November 30th, we, we had a notice from Verizon regarding storm information, an email from Elaine Cummings, the Regional Director of Verizon, State Government Affairs, State and Local Government Affairs. On December 1st, we received a petition to accept the cul-de-sac for Hillside Drive. In an email from Charles and Nancy McDivitt to Chairman, Chairwoman Blanchard and, and the Town Administrator. The, on December 1st, we received a, a, a report from the Community Food Collaborative regarding the garden behind the Town Hall. And it's amazing how many pounds of produce that, that were generated this season, given that, you know, we had COVID-19 and everything. They did an unbelievably good job. The Community Food Collaborative and helping out with organic foods for the community. The, and I can believe that's all of the correspondence for this December 7th meeting.
Okay, does anyone else have anything? Okay, next we have minutes, November 16th, 2020.
Madam Chair, Chase is, Chase had, Chase dropped off, so he's trying to call in at this time. But, you know, you can keep going.
Okay, anyone have any corrections or solutions?
Yeah, I did. I'm trying to find the minutes, though.
I'm ready. Mary? I just have a couple. On page 281, it's the third paragraph or the second full one. It says in the middle, Vice Chair Dowling also asked if the Fiskdale Sewer Service would take sewer that is going to Southbridge and put it on that one.
Fiskdale.
Yeah, can you, uh, scrap, insert instead, Vice Chair Dowling also asked if the proposed pump station to service the possible development off Fisk Hill would include the sewer that is currently going to Southbridge? So, again, it's Vice Chair Dowling also asked if the proposed sewer pump to service the possible development off Fisk Hill would include the sewer that is currently going to Southbridge, not the Fiskdale Sewer Service. Thanks, Mike. And then my only...
Wait, wait, Mary, wait a minute on that. Alex, had you corrected that before you sent the minutes out? Because that's one of the corrections I had sent you and it was the, um, it's Hill Sewer Service.
Um, I believe so. Um, maybe I did pull the wrong one. I'm sorry if I did.
Okay. Yeah, Mary's correction is fine, then. It'll clear it up.
Yeah, if you just, if you want to be simple, just cross out Fiskdale Sewer Service and insert proposed pump. Well, proposed pump on Fisk Hill. And then I would just add to service the development that is being considered would include the sewer, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alex. And the only other change I have is the second full paragraph under the water bill abatement. It says Vice Chair Dowling agreed with Chair Blanchard on his request for a second meter. Just insert a period there and scratch the rest because the rest of that sentence dealt with the request. And instead, put period. She is in favor of an abatement, however.
Got it, will do.
Awesome, and that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, this is Mike. And on page 284, second paragraph down, and it says Lechman Suppan asked if the town takes advantage of Myers Rewards. And then Robin, Facilities Coordinator, said that last year the rewards are for some, at $1 value of, I think the rewards, the remaining rewards were $4,652 and they're looking to use that, that grant money for something different than originally, something like that. I think that was the crux of that. It just, when I read it, I, I, I didn't really understand what was said there. But I think, I think if the rewards were $4,052, that's all we, we really need in there.
I think what that's supposed to read, I'm sorry, Mike. Yeah, I think it's supposed to read, there's a dollar, the rewards equal the dollar value of $4,652.
Oh, so the, rather than dollar sign, say, no, the word dollar should be there, right?
Yeah, it's a dollar value rather than dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, it's just awkward, it's just awkward. It's an awkward statement, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, if, but if the word dollar was there instead of the dollar sign and, and one, it would, it would read correctly. I, I understand.
No, good catch, thank you.
Just rooming.
And, anything?
Yeah, I had one, what the heck was it? One other thing. Um, oh, yeah, on page 286, under, under the, uh, on the, let's see, one, two, three, under new business, the, let's see, one, two, three, third paragraph, not including the motion, it says Mr. Bridges and RLS Logistics submitted a letter of intent for tax abatements for, rather than TIP, T I P, it should be, I think, a T I F, a TIF, Tax Increment Fining, Manson is the acronym. So, so that it, an F instead of a P.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Can anyone else? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make the motion to approve the amended minutes. Ian?
Your second?
Second, Mike.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Yes, Mike.
Ian?
Yes.
And Chase did call in.
Mary, I'm here, too. Yep, I'm on there, I, I, yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Good evening, Forum?
Let me find, hold on. Good evening, is there anyone on the line that would like to speak on the Citizens Forum with the Board of Selectment? Is there anyone to speak to the Citizens Forum, to the Board of Selectment? Nope, there's no one on the line.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I have one more, just one more thing.
Jeff?
Um, in-person meetings. We did, or Jeremy worked out the audio issue with having in-person meetings, running go-to meeting and having the public call in. So, at some point, probably not in the next month or two, but when, at some point, we can get back together. The public still can't be in the building because of capacity issues. But we have solved our technical problem at Town Hall for the board being in person and still having go-to meetings for public and for presenters.
That's good. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Yes, Ian.
Okay, Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, have a good night, everyone. Talk to you in two weeks.